Why wouldn't the governor himself want to get to the bottom of finding out why our oil tax settlements have dropped from $200 million down to $200,000? I think everybody in the state would want to do that. We're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars.
That we need.
Per year.
That we really need.
Potentially billions of dollars. This is a big deal. This is one of the bigger pieces of legislation that we passed. And it's something that, quite frankly, we shouldn't even need to pass. You would expect you to have a cooperative relationship with the governor. You would expect the governor would be out there fighting for every penny that we can get.
Welcome to the East Anchorage Book Club. I'm your host, Andrew Gray. The purpose of this podcast is to tell the stories of Alaskans of interest and importance. Today, our guest is Senator Bill Wilikowski, Chair of the Rules Committee in the Alaska State Senate. He's here today to discuss the upcoming special session called by Governor Mike Dunleavy to begin at 10:00 AM on Saturday, August 2. Senator Wilikowski explains the way special sessions generally work, why this one is different, and discusses frankly, the political gamesmanship at play, given that overrides of governor vetoes must be taken up within the first five days of the legislature reconvening. We discussed the line item veto of education funding, but also Senate Bill 183, which helps the legislature's auditor better assess the oil and gas tax revenue for our state. This bill was widely seen as a transparency bill, and Governor Dunleavy's veto of SB 183 raises red flags. Senator Bill Wilikowski, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you for having me. Good to see you.
Yeah, I'll just have you start as the Senate Rules Chair, just explaining how special sessions work, what's happening with our current special session, and just sort of where we are and what the plan is.
So under the constitution, the governor has the authority to call the legislature into a special session at any time. The legislature also has the authority to call itself into special session. That takes two thirds vote of both bodies, so it's a combined total of 40 votes. And legislature rarely does that, but governors occasionally call us into special session on, on critical issues. This one is sort of unique because these are issues that we have rehashed for many years. The governor is saying he's calling us in on the issue of education and the issue of Department of Agriculture creation. We rejected that creation of the department because it would cost millions of dollars. And the positions that the governor was proposing to add for that department were administrative positions. They were HR positions, IT positions, accounting positions, positions that really didn't further agricultural industry here in the state of Alaska, but really just grew bureaucracy and would have cost us millions of dollars. And so I think the legislature looked at that and the public looked at that. And, and that wasn't something that we felt we needed to do or could afford to do, you know, in a world of unlimited resources, sure, go ahead and do it. But we've already got a division of agriculture and you really can do everything he wants to do through that division. So that's one thing. And then, of course, the issue of education is something we, we've discussed for many years. We passed multiple pieces of bipartisan legislation by large margins, and the governor's vetoed those. We've overridden him. And, and so now we're, you know, his call is to have us go back and, and rehash some of the issues that we've already rejected. So he has the authority to do that. You know, there was some concern that we might not be able to get everyone back. Senator Dunbar is deployed right now through the National Guard. He really jumped through some incredible hoops to be able to come back. He went through his chain of command and, and just received the authority to come back, to fly back on his own dime. He's going to fly for probably 20 hours, land here and, and boat, and then he's going to have to fly back shortly after that. And, and then I know other people are flying in from all around the world to attend this. People have changed up their, their schedules. We've got a citizen legislature. People are out fishing. People are out working. But everybody understands that we need to go back and do this. And that, that big issue is the veto overrides, and that's really the reason the governor called this was because I suppose he thought he'd have a better chance. And he pretty much admitted this, that he didn't have a better chance of having his vetoes not overridden if he called it. And that's a pretty cynical ploy. I've never seen a governor do that before. I don't know that it's ever been done in, in state history. But we'll, we'll go back and we'll have the veto overrides on day one and see how they go.
Well, to flesh that out, it's because if we had no special session, we would need to take up any potential veto overrides immediately upon reconvening in January and Juneau. But because we have a special session, any potential veto overrides need to be overtaken within the first five days of the current special session. And so the theory is, is that the governor assumed we wouldn't have enough votes to override because, as it's been widely reported, he met with minority members of the House and Senate and asked them not to attend the special session for the first five days in order to deny us the number needed to override.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Statutionally, the legislature is required to take up vetoes within five days the next time they meet. So ordinarily, we would not have to take up these overrides until January, which is the next time we're scheduled to meet. But the governor knew that there were going to be several supporters of a veto override out of the country, including one deployed in our military. And he, rather cynically, many would say, I would say as well, called the special session so that, thinking that we wouldn't have enough people there to successfully override. We still may not have enough people. You never know how these things work, but, but people are making efforts and really traveling from all over the world to be there for it.
Well, there are some folks in the blogosphere, social media, who have a theory that once it's obvious that there's going to be enough people showing up to override, that, that he could immediately cancel the special session. Is there a point where it's like past the point of no return? Or could he cancel the special session on that Saturday morning of August 2nd when we all show up?
So we've checked on this with our attorneys and they believe he probably does have the legal authority to withdraw his proclamation right up until the time that we gavel in. Now that said, the legislature, by their same token, if the governor were to, you know, the day before saying, hey, I changed my mind, I'm not going to do this. Well, guess what? Everybody's made travel plans. Everybody's planning on flying in and everybody's got lodging, upended their lives. The legislature at that point could say, no, we're deciding to call ourselves there anyway. We could do that. And so we're, you know, we're a little bit uncharted territory here, but I would say at this point, it's, it's highly likely we will go to special session on August 2.
An important point that I think needs to be spelled out for folks is that the governor line item vetoed $200 of the BSA out of the budget. And to override that line item budget veto requires 45 votes from the combined legislature, the Senate and the House. But policy overrides would only require 40 votes. And so although I think much of the public is really laser focused on that line item veto of education funding, even if we were short the 45 to override that one line item veto, we could still potentially do other veto overrides.
That's correct. There are two different types of vetoes. You have veto, vetoes of appropriations, things that require funding, budget items typically. Those require three quarter vote, which is 45 of the 60 legislators. That's actually the highest veto override threshold in the United States. It gives the governor tremendous power. It makes it extremely hard for a legislator to override. In fact, I've been here in my 18 ranking years. I've only seen it happen once under Sarah Palin, Governor Sarah Palin, many years ago. But yes, 45 votes for an appropriation. It's only 40, which is 66.6% for other bills. So there are other bills that were vetoed. The governor's vetoed seven pieces of legislation. It's a, it's a high number. It's probably higher than, than I've seen in many years. Vetoed Senator Dunbar's paid a lending bill, which, I don't know how much you want to get into these. But there was a veto of an oil and gas auditing bill.
I want to talk about the oil and gas auditing bill. So Senate Bill 183. I just reread the article in the Alaska Beacon by James Brooks from June 16th. I'll put a link to that in the show notes, basically explaining what this audit bill did, what a high margin it passed by, and why it's very concerning that the governor would veto that particular bill. Can you explain what SB 183 intended to do, why we have that bill, and why we need that bill?
Sure. Under the Alaska Constitution, we have an independent auditor. The role of the auditor is to make sure that our finances are, are being done correctly, that there's nothing being hidden, that the numbers are being calculated correctly, that we're receiving the revenue we should be, that we're reporting our liabilities and assets correctly. And every year, there's a very large 600 plus page. It's called a single audit that's done on all statewide operations. Well, a number of years ago, the legislature started to notice that we had a, a very large drop in our oil and gas tax audit numbers. Okay.
Meaning that we were taking in less money than we had been taking in?
Yes. So per decades, ever since we have had oil being produced in Alaska, there have been disputes with the oil companies about how various items should be calculated, what sort of deductions should be allowed. We get our oil revenue through a series of different pots. We get royalties, we get severance taxes, we get property taxes, and we get corporate income taxes. Those are the major ones. For years, the debate was over royalties. And what the oil companies were doing was they were claiming certain deductions off of their royalties, and it was costing the state billions of dollars. In fact, there were years of litigation in front of a variety of courts, and the state won billions of dollars, and we lost billions of dollars. But that was just over royalties. For many years, for decades, in fact, we had what's known as a gross profits tax for oil. And it was generally 12 and a half percent. All that means is that if oil, oil comes out of the ground and if it's $100, I'm going to make this real, real simple, but let's assume it's $100, then the state would get $12.50 as a tax, a 12 and a half percent gross tax, right? Back in 2005, there was a big push by the oil industry to change from a gross tax to a net profits tax. This was something that was very important to the industry. They insisted on it. And under a net profits tax, the industry is allowed to deduct its expenses. And, and you can think, well, okay, that's what's wrong with that. Well, here's, here's the challenge with that. They have some of the best, if not the best, tax accountants and attorneys in the world working for them. And they very cleverly wrote a bill called the Petroleum Profits Tax that went into effect in, I believe, 2005. That was the bill for which 10% of the legislature was indicted and went to jail for corruption. What they did was, if you can think of it as a bucket, you have, you have this bucket and you're filling this bucket with oil revenue, but they punched so many holes in the bucket in the form of tax deductions that we ended up getting much less than we expected. And so some, some of the, you know, just to give an example, you could have a company that's based in Texas and they might rent a car in a fleet of cars in Texas for their employees. And if they get in their car and they talk about their, now, mind you, this car is in Texas and they're driving this car in Texas and it's being used by their Texas headquarters employees, but maybe in that car, they discuss their Alaska fields or they discuss their Alaska operations. They may at that point say, well, we want to deduct the expenses of that car off of our Alaska taxes. That's just one example, right? They may, they may buy health club memberships for their employees and say, well, we want to deduct that off of our Alaska taxes. They may go out for a steak dinner in London where they're discussing their Alaska operations. And they'll say, we want to deduct that off of our Alaska operations. You can imagine there's millions of lines of deductions and expenses that they will try to claim that should be written off their Alaska taxes. And we're talking billions of dollars here. And so what happened was, there was a lot of concern back in 2005 about going to this net profits tax. And then, of course, we saw what happened. There was complete corruption. We didn't get anywhere near what we expected to get revenue wise from the petroleum profits tax. Sarah Palin got elected. The FBI raided the legislature. 10% of the legislature went to jail. And at that point, legislators, people like Harry Crawford, people like Beth Kertula, who said, no, we don't want to do a net profits tax anymore. We're done with that. And so there was a big push to go back to a gross profits tax. That did not succeed. We ended up with a net profits tax. And sure enough, immediately we began to have audits which showed that the oil industry was being very generous in, in how they viewed deductions under that tax structure. And so every year since 2007, the audits have revealed hundreds of millions of dollars typically in deductions that the oil industry should not have taken. And so what happens with that is at the, an audit is done and the Department of Revenue says, hey, you underpaid us by 150 million, 200 million, $300 million. And then the industry, every year since 2007, would have to make a payment to the state. That payment goes constitutionally into our constitutional budget reserve. And so you'll, you'll see a line item in, in virtually every revenue forecast ever since 2007, showing a fairly significant funding for this underpayment. And it's, it's typically 150 to 200 million or more. Well, what happened was several years ago, that number started to drop precipitously. And legislators saw this and our auditors saw this and started to say, hey, we need to audit what the auditors are doing. We need to look at Department of Revenue because something doesn't look right here. Okay? So the auditor then went to the Department of Revenue, who the Commissioner is Adam Crum, and said, hey, we want you to provide us with this information. And they refused to provide this. Okay? And this is going back four or five years now. They refused to provide the information that the state requested. Now, finally, what the state said was, well, okay, here, here's your information. They gave the auditor a data dump. And it was just, just thousands of documents that you cannot understand, right? It's just if, imagine if someone just gives you sheets of paper with, with numbers on it, thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of sheets of paper with the numbers on it. Like, here's the, here, I gave you the data. That's not how it's done. In fact, if you look at the time the auditor's been there, which has been several decades, she said she's always gotten this data in a format that she can understand and interpret, and that the auditor is working with her can interpret. And in fact, the Dunleavy administration initially provided the information as requested by the auditor, but then they stopped. And they said, no, we don't need to do that. And that triggered even further red flags, according to our auditor. And what happened was the average settlement for underpayment had went from an average of around 150, 200 million dollars down to about $200,000 just last year.
Is the Department of Revenue saying, well, the oil companies are just, they, they've learned their lessons and they're doing their taxes more legitimately now and they're paying it upfront? And we're just not finding the mistakes we used to. Is that what they're saying?
You know, the Department of Revenue really isn't saying a whole lot. They're just saying this, you know, these are the numbers. And they're not really providing any, any sort of context. And, you know, maybe that is true. Maybe the oil industry, for the first time in state history, is, is providing, you know, and look, I don't, I don't fault them, you know, their, their job is to go out and make as much for their shareholders as they possibly can. And they're going to hire, you know, the best accountants and lawyers in the world to, to interpret it the way they want. But, you know, our job as legislators and the auditor's job is to make sure that, no, that's not how it works. We hire auditors on our side to make sure we're getting what we should be getting. And, and so I don't know, maybe the industry all of a sudden, you know, decided not to do it the way they've been doing it for four years. But more than likely, that's not the case. But the fact is, we don't know. Certainly any Fortune 500 company in the world would, in looking at those numbers, would be like, whoa, wait a second, this doesn't look right. We need to take a deeper look at this, right?
Basically, if, if this is the right number, we need to see the work. Show us how this is the right number. That's what we're asking. If it's, if it's gone from 200 million down to 200,000, show us the math.
Show us the math. Show us the numbers. Show us what, how you audited it. Show us your documents. Show us your information. I mean, that's the job of the auditor. So you have the situation where the auditor is auditing the auditors because something doesn't look right.
Right.
Something is way, way off. We're getting 1% of what we have historically gotten in terms of tax settlements. And, and I just want to see the numbers. I just want to see the books. Just show us the books, right?
And so was that the birth of Senate Bill 183? Senate Bill 183 would say that they can't do this data dump of just providing tons and tons of unusable data. They need to provide the auditor with the information in a usable format in which she can actually see the math.
That's exactly it. And, you know, look, we didn't jump right to filing a bill over this. This has been going on for several years. The auditor made numerous requests for this information. And the Legislative Budget and Audit Committee, which is a joint committee, a bipartisan joint committee, House and Senate, majority, minority, we went ahead and have requested this information. We sent letters to the governor requesting this information. And they just ignored it. And they just said, we're not going to provide it to you. And we talked with our attorneys and our attorney said, that's weird. It's been provided by every governor in state history, including Governor Dunleavy in the first couple of years he was here. So we passed a bill requiring that he provide this information. You know, there already is arguably legislation that requires it, but our lawyer said, you know what? Just to be 100% sure, you can pass this. So there's no, absolutely no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Because it had just a little bit of wiggle room in it.
So we pass it by a large margin, way more than the 40 votes that would be needed to override in joint session. But when the governor vetoed it, he issued a statement saying that he felt that there were potential constitutional concerns? Is that what, that's why he said he had to veto it?
I can't really explain, I, I can't explain why the governor vetoed it other than what his veto message said. Yeah, he's saying there's legal issues with it, but though.
I mean, I'll quote him. He says that SB 183 would quote enact a sweeping and likely unconstitutional delegation of legislative authority to the legislature's audit committee and auditor.
Well, again, our auditor is set forth in our constitution. I don't know that there's very many states that have an auditor outlined in their constitution. And, and the reason that the founders wanted that was because they wanted someone who was independent, someone who would go out and ensure that there was integrity within the, the books, you know, the state finances. And, and so I don't know why, I don't know why the governor has planted a flag on this and decided to fight it as, as strongly as, as he's done. You know, again, this is, this is information provided in a format that every governor in state history has provided, including himself. And, and so I, you know, it, it's a fundamental transparency issue. And this is something that our auditor is saying they need to be able to make sure the finances are accurate.
Did our attorneys who drafted this legislation have any concerns at all that what we were trying to do was in some way violating our constitution or overstepping the legislative authority?
I'm not aware of concerns that they had. I, I ran the bill on the Senate side. It was Senator Elby Gray Jackson who really took the lead on this.
She's the chair of the Legislative Budget and Audit Committee.
Years. And, and she and her staff did a fantastic job getting this filled together. And Legislative Budget Audit Committee actually can't introduce their own bill, so they do it through the Rules Committee. So I.
Did it on their behalf.
Yeah, yeah, did it on their behalf. But, you know, I, nobody really thought this would be an issue. This was just one of those sort of common sense things that we all thought, well, why wouldn't they want to get to the bottom of this? Why wouldn't the governor himself want to get to the bottom of finding out why our oil tax settlements have dropped from 200 million down to $200,000? I think everybody in the state would want to do that. We're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars.
That we need.
Per year.
That we really need.
Potentially billions of dollars. I mean, this is not, this is a big deal. This is one of the bigger pieces of legislation that we passed. And it's something that, quite frankly, we shouldn't even need to pass. You would expect you to have a cooperative relationship with the governor. You would expect the governor would be out there fighting for every penny that we can get. You know, that was, that was Governor Hickley, Governor Hammond, you know, I, I knew both of them. When you talk to them about oil and gas, it's like, look, we respect the industry. We want them in our state. We appreciate what they do. And we have a lot of shared interests with them, but at the same time, we do have this, this tension in that they want to make as much money as they can, but we've got a constitutional obligation to make sure that we're getting the maximum benefit for the resource, for our constituents, for the people of Alaska. And you don't just give it away. You don't just give away your resources because that is how we funded our state for the last 40 years. 90% of our budget up until 2007 was funded by oil. And so when you start giving that money away, you, and you have no other source of revenue, how do people expect that we're going to fund our government? And so, so when people see their dividends cut, guess what? You just gave away hundreds of millions of dollars to the oil industry. Where did you expect that money was going to come from to make up for that? To pay for education, to pay for troopers, to pay for road plowing? That money has to come from somewhere. We have constitutional obligations. We have to fund education. We have to have a system of public safety. We have to have a court system.
And I mean, the oil companies aren't exactly struggling. It's not like they're about to go out of business. And if we take our fair share, then they're going to fail.
Well, again, it's a net profits tax, so the oil industry only pays a tax when they make a profit in Alaska. That's not how it is in any other state in the country. In every other state in the country, you pay a, you pay a gross tax. There's none of this, you know, fighting over expenses. That does not exist in any other state in the United States except Alaska. And then every quarter for the last 18, 19 years, I've gotten a report. You can look at ConocoPhillips Securities Exchange Commission reports, and I get those reports. They're public. And I send them off to our independent legislative research department. And I ask them, how does Alaska compare, at least for ConocoPhillips, in terms of profitability? And every quarter, they come back and they say, the most profitable oil jurisdiction in the world is the state of Alaska. It's more profitable than the Middle East. It's more profitable than the lower 48. It's more profitable than South America. It's more profitable than Europe. It is literally the most profitable place in the world for the oil industry, the state of Alaska.
Well, it seems to me that overriding a veto of SB 183 should be an important consideration of our upcoming special session.
Oh, absolutely. And this is worth potentially, again, hundreds of millions of dollars, perhaps billions of dollars. And maybe it's not. Maybe, maybe the oil industry just all of a sudden, for the first time in four years, you know, there's no disputes. And maybe that's the case, but at least we'll know. I suspect that's not the case, though. I suspect that there's probably hundreds of millions or perhaps billions of dollars that have been left on the table.
We're about nine days out from the special session. And do you have any predictions at this moment?
Well, you know, everything can change. If I were to predict at this moment sitting here, yes, I believe the special session will happen. I believe we will go in on day one and have a series of override votes. We'll, which will probably be include the education veto, which will probably include this bill, that oil and gas tax audit. There, there may be other bills. There may be other appropriation items that are discussed as well. I don't know that there would be much benefit, quite frankly, for us to sit there for 30 days and rehash things that we've already spent years discussing and that we can take up in January. You know, special sessions are not cheap. They cost money. We'll, we'll do what we have to do constitutionally and what we need to do for the, for the people of Alaska. But I think it would be a waste of money for the legislature to sit down there for more than one day and, and spin the wheels on issues that we have discussed for years and for which we are not going to have any sort of resolution. And let's take it up again in January. That was my.
So since it's my first special session, how do we end the special session? Let's say that we, we feel like we've done what we were sent to do on day one. Can President Stevens just gavel us out? And then what's the process in terms of whether the governor could say, no, you have to stay?
The process for us ending a special session is there, there needs to be a motion made in both bodies separately, or to sign a die, signing, that's a fancy Latin word for just final, you know, the final adjournment. And then if that passes, then we're adjourned. The governor's recourse at that point is he could call us right back with. The governor's recourse at that point is he could call us right back within an hour, in which case we come back and we waste more state money, and we spin the wheels for 29 or 30 more days and probably don't do anything. That's the recourse. That's where it could be headed. Or we could just go back in January and take these issues up again. And the governor is certainly free to file bills at that point. Any legislator is free to file bills. And we take those bills up and they pass or fail on their merit.
Do you have any thoughts on the political gamesmanship of what's happening and how this helps or hurts our ability to do the work of the Alaskan people?
The gamesmanship level is high, that's for sure. I have never seen a governor call a special session to try to game it in a way that his vetoes or her vetoes would not be, I've never seen that. That is a level of gamesmanship that I think is disappointing. It creates cynicism in our government. Look, you know, we all want to win on our issues, but there's got to be a certain level of civility and decorum in how you proceed it, or else that really damages people's trust in our government, right? So that certainly is new. Special sessions, I believe, were designed to deal with time sensitive issues, critical issues, issues that maybe you didn't have time to get to during the regular session, the issue of education, and the issue of Department of Agriculture creation. These issues are issues that we've taken up.
Senator Bill Wilikowski, thank you so much for being on the show today.
Thank you again for doing this. Thank you for your podcast.
I am including a link in the show notes to the Alaska Beacon's article by reporter James Brooks about the veto of SB 183. Thank you, listeners. If you liked what you heard, please subscribe, rate, and review us. To contact me, email rep. Andrew gray@aklag.gov or call 907-269-0123.